This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. All members are appearing remotely and we are recording. First item on the agenda is public speak. Is there anyone who has anything to say about something that is not on the agenda tonight? You can raise your Zoom hand or turn on your camera and wave or unmute and address us. I don't see anything, so moving right along. If no planning board members object, I'd like to do the the Fire Ants hours of operation, the minor modification question first, because I think we can dispense with that quickly. Is there someone here from Fire Ants? I know there's a chance that maybe people aren't going to come. Jeff, do you want to give us a quick overview?
Yes, thanks. So the operators of the dispensary at one oh two North Hampton Street had a question about the hours of operation. And we went back and forth and one of the questions that we posed back to them today was whether they thought the Cannabis Control Commission would need to be informed of an change in hours. And I think they got a like a no. I don't think the Cannabis Control Commission is going to look for anything. But the question was that when the board was deliberating on that special permit, the ordinance said that the hours could be from ten AM to eleven PM. And at the literal and then and then the board voted on the special permit. And at the same time, and then it went on a little bit longer, but there was a zoning amendment to make the hours go from ten AM to eight AM. And so the condition ended up getting worded favorably for the dispensary to say that they can operate at whatever the hours are of the ordinance. And so they were just kind of coming back to for clarification because they wanted they wanted to make sure that they had the ability to open at eight.
Yeah, and the permit was kind of it's a little it's where it gets confusing because we quote the section of the bylaw which mentions the old hours. Then it said it can be opened as long. I went back and watched it too. Like we knew that bylaw change might be coming. I think it was contemplated. So I mean, I certainly think that I think it's actually already part of the special permit in my opinion based what we voted on, but I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts or questions on the board. James?
I agree, and our intent was to let it be whatever the bylaw was, but I'd see that there is a bit of murkiness there as a result of this, and I'm wondering. I just want to talk about the options here. It's let it lie because we say, no, it's clear enough. And our, you know, our intent is still on record here, or it's what make a modification to our plan to to the condition after the fact. Can we even do that? I'm not sure.
I mean, I I almost think what we would do, Jeff, is sort of what we do when we determine that something is a minor modification is like a letter maybe signed by me or something that says that we determined that that was actually what the vote was and we affirm that. I mean, I think the decision is pretty clear. And I think when you look at it, you can see that it states what the current bylaws are, but then it says they can stay open as long as the bylaws will allow. But I'm happy to do anything that you think would help Fire Ants out with this because I think that was what we sort of voted on back then.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think if the board just takes a simple vote, say that you agree with that, that that the interpretation is that it was intended to allow those hours to occur. What they said is if the Cannabis Control Commission asked for anything, then we would just say we would submit a quick letter and I could say that on, you know, March fifteenth, the planning board reviewed this and concurred that the hours were allowed to be at eight. But they didn't think it was going to come up. So that's kind of why they bailed out. They didn't need to be here. So.
Yeah, and I don't I don't even think we need to take public comment on this because in my in my opinion, we already voted on this and it's it is the decision, the permit that we already granted. So I'm happy to take a motion, I guess, to affirm or confirm.
I motion to affirm that this is a minor modification and for Fire Ants Dispensary for one oh two North Hampton Street.
I'll second that.
All right, voting in favor, James?
I.
Chris?
I.
Ken?
I.
Harry?
I.
And I am an I. All right. Moving right along, and I I think we'll do what we did last time with these where we'll treat the A and Rs with the permit applications. Does that make sense, Jeff? Since they're tied to.
Yeah, I think that that makes a lot of sense. That's perfect.
Okay, so I think the first item on the agenda is Gabe Schuppin applying for a special permit to construct and operate a drive-through restaurant and associated site improvements. Ninety-three North Hampton Street. Patrick, welcome back.
How's it going? Great to be back.
Good, thank you.
Can I can I share my screen here?
Yeah, I just I think I just set you up to do that.
Great, awesome. Yeah. Can you can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great, awesome. So last time we're here, we discussed the site plan kind of as I'm showing here, but we had one, this this loop here came around and it connected back with the the one entrance in. And the board had some comments that they wanted to see a layout that was more similar to the McDonald's, as well as give some additional queuing length for for the left turnout. That was the majority of the comments that we got was just giving a bit more queuing length for for a left turn as well as giving some additional you know, ability for, you know, right and left to have some 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 more kind of traffic mobility here. So we listened to the comments and we kind of relooked at our our traffic and and we figured we could take the entire site and we pushed it back twenty feet. So there's an additional twenty feet of property here and we took this basically took the whole site and lifted it and moved it to the rear. And which also and then we added this dedicated in and a dedicated out. So we could have more left turn, the ability for a more dedicated left turn and and right, and then this would be the entrance only. The majority of the development itself kind of remained the same. You'd get a larger distance from North Hampton Street for the building. We have this, let me go to the next one here. We had a rain garden that was in the front here, which kind of captured some storm water from the high point here as well as some of the entrance area. And I think the board liked that. So we wanted to kind of keep that drainage feature and we made it a little bit larger because we had a bit more area. And then that kind of pipes to the same swell that goes on the left-hand side here. Just kind of optimize based on the comments, a very similar design, but made it flow a bit better. And kind of similar to something that you would see in the past that the board had previously approved. There were some comments on the 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 gas. So we have added a propane tank here since there was not the ability to have gas in the street. The remainder of the utilities kind of stayed the same. Again, just kind of push back the the length of the the site change basically that we had. And then some lighting just got updated basically for what we had. And landscaping just was revised per for the revised layout that we had. And I think the board was happy with the remainder of the the remainder of the items that we had on the plans. So I'd love to just get your feedback based on the changes and see if there's anything that you know, hopefully we've done everything that we previously were asked to do and satisfied the majority of the board.
Patrick, any other changes? First of all, I I love the in and out. I think that's great, and I'm really glad you were able to find a way to make that work. Any other changes to sort of what's going on as far as parking or any of those things because the site layout was different?
The parking, the amount of spaces remain the same. It's thirty-three required, thirty-three proposed. The flow is is the same. This were both, I got some arrows here. So basically, these these both go this direction. We have it enters the drive-through here and then there's a bypass lane. Then these are the angled spaces on the left and right.
And the stormwater looks like it's pretty much the same to you. Have your your rain garden still and you've got your stormwater land. It looks like not a lot of stuff there. Yeah, yeah, good.
Any other questions or comments from planning board members?
The propane tank, is that new? I forget. Is this, did you move it?
It wasn't there before. We previously showed a gas line that went to the street. But we have added the propane.
We noted the moratorium and I think that caused.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep.
Gas moratorium in town.
And that has all of its own licensing requirements and stuff, so.
Okay, all right, so it gets.
We don't have to worry about that on that level.
Okay. I'm good.
All right, any members of the public with comments or questions, you can raise your Zoom hand or turn on your camera and raise your hand. Or unmute yourself if you've got to and. All right, I see nothing. Jeff, anything else from the planning department?
I think the only other thing was floor plans, and I think that they got, I think there was a request to kind of observe like the general layout even, and I think that was provided. So I don't know if that's, that was the only other thing I could think of.
These were the floor plans that were asked to be provided. It was a sample floor plan, so this is provided by the client, so.
And we and we did talk last time about sort of the idea of a condition that we're going to sort of approve what's presented. And if there's changes from whoever comes in, they'll they can come back either determine that it's minor or modify the permit. But I think this is this is a clear picture of an option.
Do you need that as a specific condition?
I think we put that in the draft that that Jeff prepared, but I do think that that's one that we would just clear. I mean, I think that's always the case. But I think we can just make it clearer here where I think the operator may very well be a different group than the people here. So that way it'll be clear in the permit. Jeff, do we want to at least go through those other conditions we talked about in the that looked like the only one that was?
Yeah, if you're open to it, I can share the draft. I think I would recommend to see if the board would go. We can talk about the conditions first, but then maybe go through the findings.
Yeah, the findings and conditions, that makes sense.
So.
Patrick, have you guys gotten a copy of this at all? I know we only got it right before the meeting, but.
Yeah, it was right before the meeting. I was able to skim through it.
Okay, yeah. Though and just as the way it's structured is the beginning portion is all kind of summary of discussions, especially from the first meeting. You can see here at the top. The decision will include a summary of this meeting. And then it, this is all draft, but it considers the voting. A statement that let me move my box here. So the, you know, it's plans and specs per what was submitted. And then the series of findings. So Jesse, I don't know if how you want to handle the findings, if you want to read them verbatim or just summarize them or.
Yeah, I think we can just summarize them. I'm gonna, I've got a small image here to see, but I will so it references the stormwater management plan and that it's consistent with the purposes and objectives of the three sections of the bylaw. Oh, boy, now it moved on me.
Sorry, not as much.
That's all right. Okay, yeah. And then the special permit approval. So conformance with the provisions of the ordinances of the city of East Hampton and general laws of Massachusetts. I don't think we have any issues with that. Planning board members, feel free to speak up if you want to discuss anything in more detail as we go. And I'll provide an opportunity for comment at the end for anybody else. Protection of city amenities and abutting property. The planning board finds a project protects city amenities and adjacent properties through site development elements such as exit, turning lanes, lighting, et cetera. So I think we did a good job addressing both the lighting and the traffic. Minimization of traffic and safety impacts. I think they did a really good job here. They added the separate exit and left turn and right turn lane. I think the pedestrian means in the parking lot are good. James?
Yes, sorry, Jesse. I just wanted to add on that one point because I know we talked about it extensively at the last meeting and people that might be showing up for the first time this meeting might not know. I I know traffic is a big issue. I've had people in the public try to engage me in conversation about this, which of course we can't do, but they, you know, they told me and I need to relate to the board that, you know, traffic is a big issue. They mentioned it last week. And and I agree with you. Everything we're seeing here, they're dealing with it well. We know there's problems on this street. And, you know, this board and this applicant, I think, really did a good job trying to do the best they could to it to address that. And I just, I think that's important to state just in case people are wondering.
Agreed. Thanks, James. Adequacy of methods of disposal of sewage and refuse and the drainage of surface and subsurface water. We talked about trash and waste removal, but also the stormwater management structures. They kept their rain garden. Adequate means of protecting wetlands and watersheds. There's no impact in there in any of that. Mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources. I don't think there's any issues with that. Provisions for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles. We we talked about parking areas and loading, lighting, internal movements. Efforts to integrate the development into the existing landscape. I don't think there's really any issues with that right now for how the lot is constructed. Consistency, the development, respect to setback area placement of parking, architectural style landscaping. Yeah, I think we can find that the the project design and use are consistent with the existing highway business district. Potential for the site to connect to the remainder of ninety-three North Hampton Street may be desirable. And we've addressed the issues with entrance and exits. And this was the language too, Jeff. We talked about the board acknowledged the two thousand thirteen highway business study and determined a future waiver may be contemplated in the future to create interconnection. So that was the discussion about if that backlog gets developed that we at least want a signal to a future planning board that they may. You know, we certainly think that may be reasonable to grant a waiver if and when there are actual facts on the ground to support that. Adequacy of the measures to prevent pollution of surface or groundwater and minimize erosion. The stormwater management plan seems adequate for all of that. And adequacy of the methods to ensure that the use will not constitute a nuisance by reason of unacceptable level or air or water pollution, excessive noise or visually flagrant structures. I don't think there's any issue with that at all. Planning board members, any thoughts on those findings? Any need for further discussion? Okay, and then, well, let's see the conditions real quick, yeah. So the conditions that we discussed, one is all exterior site improvements shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with the approved site plans dated January third, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll have to update that to include the latest version too that we got, Jeff. And in the event that any exterior changes cannot be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, an alternative. Please hold. Schedule shall be reviewed and approved by the board at public meeting prior to issuance of a temporary certificate.
Can I just explain that one just for a minute? Because I think we haven't had this condition in a while, but I wanted to reinsert it because what we see is as they construct the property, if they go fast, you know, we don't know the schedule, maybe they could elaborate on that. But if if they get almost everything done as they enter winter, you know, they might not be able to put landscaping in and 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 sort of punch list final items. And so we just want to try to have the planning board get a presentation of that so that the building inspector might be able to issue a temporary CO to get them open. Or same thing could happen if they are finishing in like right now, you know, we just got out of frost. But they can't really put in landscaping yet, but they want to open without landscaping. We want to give them that flexibility. It's intended to be flexible so that the CO doesn't hold for everything if there is some unforeseen circumstance.
Thanks, Jeff. Number two requires adherence to all of the aspects of the stormwater drainage and management plan and states that the site shall not allow or cause any illicit discharges. Number three, any substantial changes to site design or building footprint as determined by the building commissioner shall be reviewed by the planning board in a public meeting. The purpose of this public meeting will be to determine whether these changes necessitate the reopening of the public hearing for this project. So that's similar to what we deal with in general anyway, but it makes it explicit that we've approved what what we have in front of us. Four, the special permit approval includes approval for any signage proposed in conformance with applicable ordinances. Five, all landscaped areas shall be properly maintained. Shrubs or trees which die shall be replaced within one growing season. And six, all construction shall comply with applicable state and federal regulations, including but not limited to the Americans with Disability Act. So any comments, questions from the planning board about any of those conditions? Patrick, any of those conditions pose any problems or any of the findings that you think not quite there?
No, they seem fine to me. Rachel, did you have any final comments on those?
Nope, it sounds sounds good to me.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think we're good with it.
Great. Members of the public, any thoughts or comments about the findings, the project in general, the conditions, any other comments or questions? Raise your Zoom hand, turn on your camera. I see nothing. All right, Jeff, any final thoughts or comments? Do you think we got everything here?
I think you pretty well covered it, so I think you're ready.
I motion to approve the special permit for Gabe Schuman at ninety-three North Hampton Street for Starbucks with the aforementioned conditions, including number one, having some dates changed.
I will second that.
All right, voting to approve the special permit. James?
I.
Chris?
I.
Ken?
I.
Harry?
I.
And I am an I. And just so I don't forget, we also have the A and R in connection with that. We don't want to leave without addressing that. So I think we had looked at the plan at the last hearing. It's slightly different, I guess, because the parcel is a little different. Patrick?
That is correct. Everything is is basically the same, except the rear has been moved back twenty feet.
Jeff, any comments from the planning department? It doesn't change the frontage at all or anything like that. They still have that frontage, but.
Yep, I think it I think it works good, and they did that to accommodate the turning lane. So it makes sense that we're we're kind of re endorsing this one. And this one would be the one that the applicant would file, record at the registry bead.
All right, so I will take a motion to endorse the.
Motion to endorse the A and R for Gabe Schuman at ninety-three North Hampton Street.
Second it.
All right, voting to endorse the A and R. James?
I.
Chris?
I.
Ken?
I.
Harry?
I.
And I am an I. Best of luck, folks. Thanks so much for your help with this getting it over the finish line.
Good luck.
Thanks so much.
Just want to appreciate it.
Yep, and real quick for
Thank you so much.
Patrick and Rachel, so if I if I may, we should be able to get this recorded with the clerk maybe tomorrow. Actually, I'll try for tomorrow and then that that would start the twenty-day appeal period. So I don't know what your plan is for applying for building permits, but you probably have to wait that twenty-day appeal period out and then you would be certainly eligible for that. So that would be my one last question is, do you have any sense of what, maybe it's your client, but do you have any sense of what the timeline looks like on your end? I know we kicked out a month, but after that.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll submit for a building permit as soon as we're able, and then our goal would be to start construction this summer. We also have to resubmit to DOT and everything like that, but we're moving, we're moving along.
Okay.
Great, thanks so much, folks.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, since I am recusing myself from the remaining portion of the meeting, I will sign off and you can give the assistant planner update afterwards because I know what's going on.
Thank you, Jesse.
Folks, thank you.
Thanks, Jesse.
Night. All right, everyone, we're going to move forward with the next items on our agenda, which are the two special permits for Eric Burson's at Fort Hill and for Birch Family Farms in addition to the associated A and R. Before I look for attorney Lane, I see that you're in channel and ask you to give us an update on where we stand. I just want to tell everyone a little bit about what we've done in the past. We voted to handle both those special permits as one thing, so I'm opening both of those permits right into those hearings right now. We're handling them in conjunction. My understanding of where we left off last meeting, and I'm going to query with Attorney Lane in just a moment to verify this is true, is that the intent is that there's been a new A and R to disassociate a portion of the property from the Fort Hill and that we're looking in essence to endorse the A and R and then remove the second part of the special permit and close the hearing and and remove it from us because it's no longer valid. And I'm hoping just that everyone kind of follows that basic process. We're going to, therefore, if that's true, we'll probably start with the A and R, talk about the second open hearing and determine whether or not we're going to cancel it. And then my guess is that the first part of it is going to be delayed to some point in the future because they'll need to get new plans to us. When we do all that during the A and R stage and in the vote to handle the second, the removal of the second open hearing, both times I'll ask for a public comment, just so you know that there'll be opportunity to speak. Attorney Lane, how do you feel about what I just said? Does that sound about right to you or did I miss?
Yes, that sounds exactly what I thought we were going to do this year.
In that case, why don't you tell us a little bit about the A and R?
So I think Emily Holmberg is here as well, the surveyor who put the plans together for us. He, let me. Shall I share my screen here? Do I have ability to show the screen?
Yes, you should.
Okay, and I do. Okay. So it is quite simple. Birch Family Farm, the owner of the adjacent eight acres to the brewery is applying for endorsement for the A and R to create this new parcel over here, parcel one B. That's the area that has gravel parking on it. There is a special permit application for that. It has been Birch Family Farms' application for use that it was allowing the brewery to make of that area, which included gravel parking and an expansion of storage containers. Birch Family Farm is now looking to create this parcel and then sell it to seventeen seventy-six, which, as we'll discuss in a bit more, will require seventeen seventy-six to amend its applications. But for now, purposes of the A and R, that's it, simply creating this parcel one B where the parking will exist and then selling that parcel to seventeen seventy-six.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the board for questions in a moment, but I just want to make a couple of statements. Really, with A and Rs, we have one criteria we're after, and that's frontage. It's clear that both both ends have more than enough frontage shares and it meets that mark. I want to state that. I want to state one other thing. At the last meeting, there was a public comment about the type of dirt, I think, that was put down. And we just asked if you'd consider it. I wonder if you have any update on that.
Sure. It wasn't clear to me that I was addressing that here or at the further continuance, but in any event, the I believe the abutter raised a concern that the soil was trucked in. It was inconsistent with the merrimac soil that has been identified on the Birch Family Farm property. So if that were true, I don't know that I I I don't know that it's a subject for for this proceeding. However, my clients have explained to me that the soil that's there is native to the land. It was soil that was taken when the parking area was created and then redistributed on that land. I don't know. I've searched the zoning ordinance. The only thing I could possibly think of that would apply here would be section ten, six, one on removal of soil other than removal that is incidental to construction that is part of a special permit. I don't even know that that applies. If it does apply, then I think it would be a question to visit when you consider the final submission of seventeen seventy-six related to the creation of parking lot. But what has been represented to me is that that soil is native to the Birch Family Farm property. And what my clients intend to do is level the mounds and just spread that soil throughout the property.
Okay, I'd like to make just a couple of comments. First off, as I stated earlier, our real criteria, and this is frontage. You know, I was curious about it and and did do a little investigation in ten point three to see if when it was done had had a special permit been requested and the proper proceedings gone through, would something like that be an issue that we require? I couldn't see anything in there, so I asked an expert that I know to to comment. I'm wondering, Planner Bag, if you can tell me what you found in ten point three. Is there anything there that would have, do you think, caught them had they come for a special permit?
Well, we were, Attorney Lane looked at a different section. So the the section that Attorney Lane mentioned was removal of of soil or earth and materials. And it kind of like likened it up to a quarry that that's also in that heading in that section. Ten point three is another section that I would, we looked at to see its filling of swales and valleys, et cetera. It does deal with filling land. But when we started to look at this, I I would argue that I don't think if if the applicant applied to come forward and build the mounds for the for the for the track, I don't think ten point three would have been applicable. I think what we had talked about was the stormwater ordinance was the, that was one of the key items that would have been triggered because you're disturbing that much land over ten thousand square feet. But our read of ten point three right now is that it wouldn't have really been triggered by the project. And so I think it's, you know, it's a uncomfortable position. I don't, I really don't. I I my professional opinion is that the planning board doesn't really have the jurisdiction to regulate what kind of soils being brought in. And, you know, maybe it's a future ordinance that would address that, but I think The jurisdiction to regulate what kind of soils bring brought in and you know, maybe it's a future ordinance that would address that, but I think. If the applicant was, if the application was submitted and reviewed, I don't think the planning board would would have really been able to dictate the type of soil that. Gets brought in, so. I think that's, I appreciate Attorney Lane looking at ten point six. I did not look at that, but that's removal and ten point three is filling. And I would argue that I don't think it's applicable. For this case.
I I I I looked at ten point three as well. I looked at all fifty-one references to the word soil within the zoning ordinance. And ten point three did not seem applicable because it was about swales, but I I hear your point. I I agree. I don't think there's jurisdiction over the issue of. Trucking infill, so. If that were the case, I don't think there's jurisdiction. If we're talking about. Removal, I I'd argue that there was never removal. There's a redistribution of existing soil within the property.
Okay. With that information.
At any event.
Go ahead.
That's all, is that my my clients are offering to take the most contentious issue out of these proceedings and level these mounds. I, I.
I agree with the with the point being raised there.
That's my, that's my point.
Let me ask the board their feelings on the matter, or just about the A and R in general. Board, any comments?
I've I've no comments about the A and R general and I think that also it's just, we don't, we don't know. We were, I think we it's one person's word against another about whether it's was native or not, and I think we have to take the. Owners, property owners' word for it that it's native, so I'm comfortable going down that. Path, so I have no other comments on the center.
Ken, Harry?
No comment.
Okay, in that case, I think I'm going to just open it to the public. Any comments about the A and R? You can press star six or star nine or show yourself on the camera and raise your hand or speak out loud. Anyone that wants to make a comment about the A and R? I'm not seeing anything. One once, going twice. Okay. Then in that case, we're looking to motion uh for a motion to endorse the A and R.
I make motion to endorse the A and R for Ford Hill Road Birch Family Farm to add land from this, from the Birch Family Farm property to Ford Hill Brewery. Or to create parcel one B.
Any second.
Second.
Okay, excellent. Alright, all in favor, Chris?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
And I am an I. It looks like the A and R has been endorsed, Attorney Lane. Which brings us to our second issue of the night and that is therefore, now that the second portion of the special permit request. Seeking to amend the special permit for the, I think Birch Family Farms. Is no longer, the property is changed. You'd like to remove that and close the public hearing for it and we'll deal with it on the other special permit. Is that correct?
That is correct, so that's that's the formal submission that I made for tonight is. With this, I would hope that we could close the hearing for Birch Family Farm. They they no longer have any application that they want considered. As I said, the application for the recreation areas withdrawn. And application for. Parking area. Will become part of seventeen seventy-six's application. With that, I'd ask that. You approve the withdrawal of their existing application and close the public hearing for Birch Family Farm.
The big concern for me, of course, was the offer to level off all the mounds and all the work that was there. I think that, thank you for that. I think that everyone involved is going to be happy to see that happen. Personally on this, I think it's it's the appropriate move to make. I have no further comments to add to it. I saw Chris, you had your hand raised.
I do, so I I have no problem with with closing this out. I think it's a good idea. This makes it much cleaner and I'm happy to see this happening. My question is. Is there a way to make sure that we can, or do we have to in create a condition to enforce that these mounds will be removed? Is that part of a condition for the effective closing of it, or is it something that we just monitor and? How's that documented?
Because there'll be no written statement at the end, but I think Jeff had a comment about that when. Asked a similar question.
If it'd be alright, I was hoping that I was hoping, I was hoping to hear what Attorney Lane had to say first and and figure out exactly what we can do with this one.
Sure, so what my, what I'm asking for is if you could just give us until July first. To have it taken care of. It it's it's interesting. I also spoke with the city's attorney on this point relative to the civil enforcement action. Because it was the the recreation area, the creation of the mounds themselves were one of the subjects of that action. So. That action's still pending. Attorney Tanner and I will probably be discussing. The conditions under which Birch Family Farm might be dismissed from that action at this point as well, and I would assume that this would get covered there. I I if. I don't know. I'm open to the board making the removal a condition for closing public hearing. I don't know. How you would. Write a word or to document.
It can only be a condition on the other special permit that's left remaining, to which doesn't apply to the property involved, so I don't see that we have. Leverage there. It's it's awkward.
Right, I I'm I'm certainly willing to make the removal of the mounds, the condition for dismissal of the civil enforcement action if that.
Yeah. I think that that's gonna, yeah, I think that it's gonna be the, that is actually probably gonna be the best and most effective way. To handle this, because I think the way the. Enforcement action is is on hold. So that as much of the, as many of the issues can be resolved via the planning board as possible, and I think this is a step in the direction of resolving. Recreational uses element. I would urge Attorney to. Condition the release of Birch Family Farm from that based on this, like July first deadline and if. If, and I don't suspect this is the case at this point, but if for some reason. They're just simply not gonna remove it after July first, then I think that we will cause another enforcement action through the. Case. I I think that that's gonna be a cleaner mechanism in this.
I agree. Which doesn't require any vote or anything on our part. That just happens.
No, and I think if it all ended up in court, I think we would look at the letter that was submitted by Attorney Lane, which acknowledged that the the applicant is going to level the. Mounds and I think the board is considering that as part of your withdrawal. It kind of been good. So I think we're, I think we're in a decent spot. I appreciate that Attorney Lane spoke to the city attorney about that. I I mean, I I do want to just say that if if something goes awry. I think the city would be bringing in other enforcement action after after July first. I mean, I don't. If it's July fourth, I don't know, but you know, if it's into July and there's no activity, then I think. I think we would be looking at sending it out another.
Or or even I'm perfectly willing also just. Leave, leave the civil, I mean, obviously the civil enforcement action remains open as to seventeen seventy-six regardless, but leave it, leave the civil enforcement. Stayed but open as to both parties until such time. The the agreed date for removal comes. So, meaning the city could probably. Move for enforcement within the open case, because I don't think it would be dismissed until the mounds are leveled.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any further questions, Chris?
No.
Ken, Harry?
No.
At this point, I'd like to bring it to the public regarding the discussion of closing and removing the. Special permit open hearing for Birch Family Farm. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on that? You can press star six or star nine or. Just speak or raise your hand in video. Any comments at all? I don't see anyone. Going once. Oh, sorry, Attorney Lane, did you have a question?
Yes, obviously not public comment, but before you move for vote, I wanted to get in one last thing for clarification. The the fenced in dog area, I just want to make sure, like, that's gonna, Birch Family Farm is going to continue to allow essentially Eric to. Pen the dogs there, his two dogs there during the day. They are sweet, gentle labs. That spend their day there. So. I I've looked through both the pleadings in Superior Court and here I've looked at things like. It feels like that was never a concern. And so I just want to make sure that that's gonna continue. After Birch Family Farm is removed from this process. That use is going to continue.
Alright, so two things. I'll start with the easy one first. I have no problem with that. Anyone else on the board have an issue with that?
No.
I have no issue.
No.
Okay, so the second thing is that because we're doing this removal and there's no documentation afterwards, there's no condition or approval or anything we can put on that. So we can just give you this verbal as part of this and you know, this historical record that no one in the board had any problem with it. I don't know what else we could do, Jeff.
I'm I'm satisfied with that, Mr. Service. That's exactly what I just wanted to hear and I feel, I feel fine. Looks like Jeff Bag is raising.
Yeah, Jeff?
Thanks, sorry. It's just in the vein of. Clarity. I was fiddling around to see if I could put up, maybe Attorney Lane still has the A and R available. There, I just want to try to be really clear. So when we were discussing the mounds. There are mounds that run along like the south, the southerly property line, and it's the longer lineares, the bottom of the page. There are also mounds. Adjacent to the dog, the dog fence area. Where we had, you know, previously had some videos of of motorcycles being ridden in the park area and I just. I guess, I just want to clarify that those are included in the mound removal.
Yes, so the the mound removal is the the fenced in area next to the dog.
Yeah, okay.
And then the larger area, which is not shown on the A and R, but. This larger recreational bike track over here. And so these are the mounds we're talking about leveling. For Birch Family Farm.
Good, thanks for that clarification. Yeah, I think that that clarifies it that 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 would be included in the map, like that area would be removed and then the run area for the dogs would remain and I. I tend to agree with the board. I don't think that the dog run is. It rises to any kind of use and I think that's so that it looks like that can stay as long as that other. Set of jumps next to it is part of what gets removed.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. One last check from the public, from the board or anyone, any comments on this? I don't see anyone. If anyone else sees anyone, let me know. Going once, going twice. Okay, so.
Okay, I move to accept the withdrawal and close the hearing for Birch Family Farms.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Chris?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
And I am an I. We hereby close that hearing and have one left. Now that leaves us with one issue I think we have to deal with, and that is we still have an open hearing on the Fort Hill. And so I'm guessing we need to continue that so that you can get the plans.
Yes, I'm gonna ask for continuance on that still. So. I I really, I want, I'm mindful of how long this has gone on. I'm mindful of neighbors' concerns. And their concerns of how far we are into this process and we still don't have finalization. At the same time, I I I don't want to ask for so short a continuance that I really can't get everything coordinated. So I I do want to ask for sixty days from today. For submission of all remaining plans for seventeen seventy-six. Everything has to be amended now. Once we. First of all, once we get the Mylar. On record, then we need to close on a sale the property. And then. Ms. Holmberg, Mr. Swanson and I, as well as the sound control engineer that we're talking to. We have a lot of work to do.
Lighting plans.
Yes, and you know, I see her here, so I'll just point out. I've opened a dialogue with one of the neighbors, not on a butter, but a very concerned neighbor about the noise, Ms. Fisher. I can, I. I intend to continue that dialogue, particularly as we work with the. Noise control engineer on layout. Stage design, sound dampening materials, anything. Including making test runs so that coordinate with Ms. Fisher, coordinate with neighbors on the other side. If we. Change the orientation of the stage, I need to figure out if. Were then impacting people on Ford Hill Road who previously weren't getting impacted. See if we need to make adaptations to noise dampening material as a result of things like that. I I just can't imagine I get all that done in thirty days. I'm asking for sixty and during that sixty days, I fully intend to be engaged in conversations. With neighbors and abutters who have previously raised concerns about noise. I think that's what's remaining at this point as in terms of like. A neighborhood concern is is noise. And I, that's gonna be a big focus and we're gonna just need time to work that through.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Lane. So normally, I would. It seemed that a pretty lengthy period. This has gone on along a long time and it's got a lot of extraneous circumstances here especially. But. I agree with you. I think that there is a lot of information that you have to resubmit and I'd like to get it right. So that we can close this out the next time. I think while I would normally probably throw a bit of a hissy fit at that delay, in this case, it's warranted. And I would say that. In addition, you know, I think that. You know, the sound issue will take that much time, but I'd like to get the rest of the board's opinion on whether or not they think that's acceptable. Anyone else?
I think the time is worth it.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think it is a little bit frustrating that it's taking this long, but I think I appreciate the applicant doing the due diligence. To make sure this is done right, so. I am, I'm okay with the sixty days.
Harry?
Yeah, I totally agree.
So. You know, I I think that I just want to add, as we push this to the public and ask their opinion. And I see Jeff, you have your hand up in just a sec, but I just want to add, it's it's my opinion at this juncture. That things have really turned a corner and we're really making great progress and I'm appreciative to to the to the applicant. To the to the neighbors and to everyone involved. I I think that we're definitely moving forward in a good direction here, which is part of why I think this board is willing to. You know, to to do that timeline. It fits with what we're doing. Jeff?
Thanks. No, I I tend to agree that this is moving in the right direction and I think that's. Promising and good. The one thing I was thinking about, and I just wanted to air this out, I think, with the board and with Attorney Lane, just that. So maybe that's like the, so the planning board meets the first and third Tuesday, so. Let's just say hypothetically, we're looking at like May seventeenth. I just wanted to ask. If if all the ducks were in a row on the seventeenth, you know, maybe we would be ready for a vote. The board often wants to hear information. Craft some conditions and come back one more time and and that may or may not be necessary, but I guess my bottom, my point, it kind of goes towards. That with the special permit after even the vote, it's recorded at the city clerk's office and there's a twenty day appeal period. Before you can construct, you know, something. Or I guess that's my question is like activating this space. You know, I just want to be mindful of that timeline. We're kind of in this gray area where like the existing patio, you might be able to put music out there, but we're kind of pending all this stuff. So then you would have new patio and a a new configuration of music. That, I mean, realistically, you're talking about like pulling, you know, starting music. Under this new arrangement. In in June at the, like mid-June at the earliest. Unless we can come up with some other parameters. I just wanted to play out the rest of the schedule. The parking area, my understanding of the parking area is that. It 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 has changed. It will be further developed. Right, there'll be installation of lighting. So I'm just a little bit worried about what happens and like when when the brewery becomes active in the. Early summer. Where are we at with? What was allowed, what was built and and that kind of thing. So Peter, I don't know if you talked to your client about that or had thought about that, but that's the only concern I have about going so far out. Is it's gonna. Take some time to get things in place.
Me infringe on his time to do live music. He may want to do it earlier, you know, understandably.
Right. Yeah, I have not had a specific conversation about this. I I I imagine Ms. Fisher's hand is up and she's going to have. Very clear opinions about it, so. I'd actually be curious to hear from her first.
Alright, well, let's open it to the public then, starting with Ms. Fisher.
Hi, Laura Fisher, sixty-one Clap Street. I hope you're all enjoying watching me cook dinner.
I was going to ask what you were cooking.
I'm hungry.
Oats with cilantro lime rice, so now that we've entered that into the public record. I guess, for first of all, I I want to say I really appreciate Attorney Lane. It's been great to talk to. Someone reasonably about this. This is really all I wanted from the start. That being said, I don't, I don't represent all my neighbors. You know, I'm I'm one individual I'm talking about, sorry. I'm talking about my situation, so I really hope that the other neighbors are engaged. I agree, this has been going on a really long. At the same time, I want it done right and I want it done right and in a way that's gonna be a permanent solution. So that we don't all end up back here again. That's, those are, those are my concerns about it. Four nights a week of live outdoor music is significant over the course of the summer, so I just, I'd appreciate the effort. To do it in a way that's. So I just, I'd appreciate the effort to do it in a way that's not as disruptive. That's all I have to say, and I, I really hope that the communications with Attorney Lane continues, and that other neighbors are included in this as well, to the extent they want to participate. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? I've stated the mechanisms to that many times, probably don't have to do it again. Anyone at all? So Attorney Lane, May seventeenth, Jeff mentioned is the next date. Is that an acceptable date for you?
Yeah, that, that does work. The, the one thing I've, again, I feel like I want to make sure we address is you know, the, the, the live music is currently allowed. And what we're applying for, however, is, you know, special permit that involves the construction of a stage. I'm just wondering.
You're operating under the old.
We're operating under existing citywide permit for, for, for live music forum.
Plus, without a doubt, it'll have an effect on the, you know, what gets reported during that May seventeenth meeting, so, because people will be speaking about it, so.
So I mean, I, I feel like we're, we're, we're gonna have a period of time to, to start playing with things and hearing from people. I, I, I really, I mean this, and I, I've I've opened the door to Ms. Fisher. I, I'd like to open the door to other neighbors as we go through this process to, to be in contact with me. And let me know what they're experiencing. We are going to work with a professional noise control engineer. I'm a musician myself. I'm very familiar with sound engineering. I've never met a noise control engineer until now. And, or, or realized that there was a board, there was a licensing board dedicated to noise control engineering. We have found these folks, we're talking to them. I, I, I would welcome some feedback from neighbors as we go through this over the next few months. So so Ms. Fisher knows how to contact me, Jeff Bag knows how to contact me. I, I really would welcome others to let me know what they're hearing as we enter into the warmer weather now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it appears to be a gray area, and I think, you know, just having your client be mindful of where we're at in this process. We've, we've come a long way and, and, you know, a couple nights of like, you know, if, if things were, you know, just not to be adversarial about the type of music that's playing and, and the loudness of, you know, this while we're in this interim, because that could really kind of change where we're at. We seem to be all moving forward in a good direction, and I, and I just don't want it to turn into like an in-your-face kind of thing. I'm operating under my special permit up until the day I have new permit, because I, that, like, good neighborly kind of behavior was gonna go a lot longer, a lot better, and, you know, so it's just a plea, I guess, because we're in a gray area, so that's about.
Your plea is heard and it will be conveyed. Thank you.
And maybe, you know, May seventeenth, if things are really moving along, you know, I, I often commit to drafting a decision based on where we are at, and I think from what I've heard of the board, maybe this is a little bit of guidance I can seek from the board and the chair, that we have talked about this a lot, so we understand that there's gonna be, the number of parking spaces expanded, there's gonna be new lighting. So we can start to draft conditions around that, you know, and anticipate that, and I think we could start some framework around music, and that might be the last piece that we need to kind of resolve on the seventeenth, so if things go well.
Talk about that, Jeff. And that was what I wanted to bring up next with you. I think it's the right thing to discuss. You know, I, I do think you're right. We have some stuff in the old application that'll probably be in the same genre, but the truth is, we're re-presenting a, a new application, new plans, new everything. We're, we're kind of required to kind of go through it all again to make sure that it all meets muster. I think some of it will be streamlined, obviously, it will go faster, because we've been sowing the weeds with this for a while, but we do have to go through everything. So I think it is a good idea to kind of draft what we think. But I don't think we can really utilize that draft or send it publicly to anyone until we've kind of, you know, hammered that first meeting out. I mean, the goal, I think, that you're talking about is it's possible, if everything lines up, that at that first meeting, maybe it's a long meeting, but we hear everyone, that we vote to approve. That is possible. Without having that basic draft in play so that you can pull it up when we get there, it's, that's harder. We really do need that second meeting, because we're bound to have conditions on, I mean, it's, it's going to happen. So, and I, and I get that there's a desire from everyone involved to have that happen in that meeting. So I'm in favor of drafting something, but we have to be really careful, because this is a new plan to us, that it's a new process. Thoughts, anyone?
I think it makes sense, if I may, I think if we couldn't meet on May seventeenth, and Peter, I think this is just the, the pattern of the board, is that we could probably really firm up the board's position on everything, but it could take that two, the next two weeks into, like, so it'd be June, I'm just looking at a calendar, so June seventh. Much like we just did with the previous application where that would be the, the June seventh, if that, if it went that far, it would be a quick, pretty easy meeting to go over the final decision and get your vote. But then there's appeal periods and things like that, so those are the things I'm kind of just mindful of too. So I appreciate that.
It may not happen. We may be able to, you know, like I said, Jeff will do his best to come out with, and thank you, a draft that, that'll, that's close, and we may be able to wordsmith that on the spot. You know, it is possible still that we can do it, but I think Jeff's right. It's more likely that it'll be the two weeks after. Okay?
Yeah, that, yes, I understand. And when it, and especially when it comes to the issue of sound, I, I I didn't expect the final hearing to actually be final. Because it sounds like, you know, you're going to want to have some period, or we've said it, and you've said it before, and we were on board for this, that there'd be some kind of period of review to understand how these, how the design shakes out in reality.
That will definitely be a condition, as was already discussed, but thank you for bringing that up. Any other thoughts from the board? Okay. In that case.
All right, all right. I think, I think we did. I think we went for, okay, so I make a motion to continue the special permit for Eric Burson's and Fort Hill Brewery at thirty-four Hill Road to May seventeenth at six P M.
For a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Chris?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
And I am an I. Thank you very much, Attorney Lane. All right, and thank you to the neighbors for coming. At this point, Jeff, I think we only have one issue left on the agenda, and that's an update on hiring. What you got for us?
Yep, thanks. So excited, you know, we are able to say that we did hire someone, and he's actually been attending the meeting here tonight. His name's Eli. Eli, will you do a quick introduction of yourself, and I'll say that Eli is gonna be starting next week. So we're super excited about that, and then I invited him to come, because I think like attending him one of these meetings is sort of the best introduction to anything. So Eli, do you want to say a couple of words?
Yeah, I'm Eli. You know, I live in Northampton, in my kitchen right now. Coming to you from my kitchen. Yeah, I'm really looking forward to getting to East Hampton. I've been in Chicopee doing an internship there for the last eight months, and yeah, excited for a new challenge, a little more responsibility, and was really impressed by that meeting. That was like very efficient and friendly and just, yeah, very cool. So looking forward to working with all you.
Great, thank you. Can't wait to work with you.
The, yeah, the approach will be, I'll kind of work with Eli on, there's so many nuts and bolts of the position, and then I'll probably come to a few meetings with Eli, and then at, at some point, he'll be taking over the planning board support role, and we'll kind of run in tandem as long as we need to, and, you know, I'll follow along with the, the case that we just talking about. I'll, I'll follow that one through, and then, you know, we'll bring Eli on for, for shepherding in next applications and things like that, so. Jesse got to meet Eli at the second in-person interview, so he was okay with bailing out, because he has, he's met Eli once.
All right. All right, I'm really excited about it. Can't wait to work with you.
Yeah.
You know what else I'm excited about?
Motion to adjourn.
One more quick thing, sorry.
Okay.
Under like, things not reasonably anticipated, we did get some information. It seems to be kind of evolving, but, but the idea of going back in person for meetings could happen in April, and one of the big discussions that is, is kind of happening is the option to go in person only, or to go like into a hybrid mode. And the hybrid mode would be that the board members come into a, a meeting room, and we need to iron out like whether the applicants are present in the meeting room, but we would have the ability for someone to zoom in and participate. And that's kind of the hybrid. So what, what I'm hearing, and this is new information from today, is that we will not be going virtual anymore. It's really gonna be board that kind of either go in person or do a hybrid mode, and, and Jesse signed you guys up to be a hybrid. Because we have seen that we get a lot of additional public participation by people who could attend via Zoom. So, so we'll iron out some details, but it could come quick, like the meetings in April could be back in town hall. So I just wanted to give that shout out, because.
We have a meeting on the twenty-ninth, so the one after that could potentially be the next. Okay, well, that's very exciting news. I had a brief conversation with Jesse about this and, and Jeff, and I know that Eli, I think you'd probably be the one to, to manage the web component of that, so that the chair or acting chair wouldn't have to do that and chair the meeting at the same time. I can't wait to see how we structure that and how it works. I'm sure it's gonna be great.
Can I clarify, can I clarify something? The agenda says our next meeting is April fifth.
Well, it does. Am I wrong about the twenty-ninth, Jeff?
Uh, no, you are not wrong. The, the, the meeting on the twenty-ninth is the zoning amendment, that forty-yard district, right? So that's, yeah, that's, but the next regular scheduled planning board meeting would be April fifth.
Which would likely, will need confirmation and probably get it at that meeting on the twenty-ninth, but will likely be in City Hall.
Correct.
Awesome. So actually, right now, we're, we have a motion on the field, and I've handled it appropriately. I don't think we have a second yet. Was there a second to the adjournment?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, Chris?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Have a great night, everyone. Good to meet you.
Thank you, everyone.
Meet y'all.